Here. Call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Here. Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. I want to ask everyone to stand, please. We have an invocation by Councilman Campbell, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Can we bow our heads, please? Dear my Father, our God, and our Savior, Lord, we just want to thank you for another blessed day. Father, we thank you for the city of Danville. We thank you, Lord, for our city manager, deputy city manager, all of council and leaders within our community to serve our people. And, Lord, we pray tonight, as we come to make major decisions about the lives of our people for a good quality of life, I pray for your spirit to move within council to make the right, appropriate decision. Look down upon our country with so much uneasiness, and we thank you, Lord, for the leadership that we have to deal with our people in this community, and we shall give you glory, honor, and praise in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to say good evening to everyone and those of you who are viewing from home. We have a proclamation this evening. Mr. Massey, if you come forward from the Alliance Human Services, and if you want to bring your staff, they can stand too if you want to, or bring them forward. Don't be shy. Councilman Campbell already prayed for you, so you don't have to worry about it. Come. Say good evening to everyone. Whereas foster families provide a unique opportunity to impact children's lives by providing care for children until they can be reunified with their families, or finally forever family, and whereas children in foster care need and deserve a loving, supportive, nurturing, and quality foster family, and whereas approximately 100 children are in foster care in Danville and Pennsylvania County, and whereas the Virginia Department of Social Services, community-based agencies, state and local agencies, and communities join together to raise awareness of the need for quality foster families in Virginia, and whereas approximately 5,500 children in Virginia live with foster families, and whereas the United States designates the month of May as Foster Family Awareness Month and Appreciation Month to recognize the enduring and invaluable contributions foster parents provide to children in their care, and whereas Foster Families Awareness and Appreciation Month also provides families and children across Virginia an opportunity to celebrate the impact that foster families have on their lives. And therefore, I, Alonzo Jones, the mayor, and the members of Danville City Council of the city of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Foster Families Awareness and Appreciation Month in the city of Danville, and encourage our fellow citizens to open their hearts, open their homes, to children in this city who are in need of quality foster care, given under my hand this fourth day of May 2021. You may come and get your proclamation, and please feel free to give some comments. And again, let's give them a big hand for all the hard work today. Pull it. Let's make sure that mic is on for him, and you can adjust it, too. We want to make sure that people hear this is great work that you're doing. Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor Jones for this proclamation, and also the distinguished members of city council for this. My name is Adrian Massey, and most of you probably know me. I am, have, was born and raised in Danville, Virginia, and I am privileged to consider myself a Danvillian. I'm privileged of that. And what is Alliance Human Services? We are a treatment foster care agency and that works with the Department of Social Services on incredible individuals who want to become foster parents, and then we match my angels, that's what I call my children, in these great homes. And it's such a joy of mine. Some of you may know my father. I think some of you may have heard of Samuel Massey, who was a school principal, and I think it, the, how it didn't fall far, because I'm in the same profession, helping children, helping families. And I am also honored to work alongside some incredible, dynamic, amazing, magnificent individuals. They are our foster parents, and if we can give a round of applause to some of our foster parents. Our foster parents, we would not only have an agency, but we would not be able to serve the city of Danville. There are so many children who are in need of care, in need of nurturing and structured homes, and in our alliance, foster parents are able to provide that. So I thank you all for this proclamation, and please spread the word. We need foster parents. We need individuals who are willing to open their hearts and their homes to children.
Mr. Massey, if you could introduce some of those amazing, dynamic, wonderful, magnificent, stop me when you want me to, foster parents. So when they're out and about, our citizens will be able to see them and thank them for what they're doing in our communities.
I would love to do that. I didn't want to be out of order. We have Jody Coleman here.
Jody, wave your hand so they'll see who you are. When you were in Walmart, they can thank you for all what you do.
Oh, yes. We have Severus Fitzgerald. Some of you may have heard of Mr. Fitzgerald.
That must be incredible step out so people can see who you are. There you go. Incredible.
Have the spectacular Candace Atkins, and we have our intern who was able to, to... Then we have another individual who, I don't know if you all heard of the Edmonds. Wonderful, courageous, Felicia Edmonds. And last but certainly not least, we have our vice president, Doris Dobyla, who's here as well.
Oftentimes, we read proclamations and we go really swift, but I just wanted to pause and say thank you all so much. You know, as a saying, I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. I want to thank you all so much. We take this not lightly. Councilman Campbell.
Yes, Brother Massey, I knew your daddy very well. You know that. Your mother, your family, and your relatives. And when you say this is your work and part of what your father put in you, I would agree. I can just smile the way that you were talking and sincerity that you have. I just want to pray that you move forward and continue to deal with concerns of young people in the community, and most definitely anything that we can do. You know I got your back and do whatever I can. More than happy to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your work in the community.
Yes, sir. And thank you.
Anyone else? Again, thank you all so much for all that you do. Thank you all so much. I hope you all have a great evening. Thank you. Thank you. Under Communications, anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, and good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stephen Gould with Burns Gould Law. Our office is at 312 Main Street. Our firm has the privilege of being the local representative for Caesars Entertainment, and I am pleased to introduce two guests from Caesars who are with us tonight, who are both intimately and intricately involved in the development of the Caesars Virginia Resort. So let me introduce Mr. Robert Livingston, who's the senior vice president with Caesars, and also Mr. Daryl Quick, who's the vice president of Design and Construction. And Mr. Livingston's going to share a few words.
Good evening, gentlemen. Welcome.
How's everybody doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Mayor Jones, council. Good to be here. Got to meet some of you guys yesterday, so it was great to do that. First of all, I would like to say this thank you to the city for selecting Caesars, entrusting Caesars to own, manage, run this project. It's a big deal. I, too, came from a community of about 50,000 people, and I understand what a project like this means to the community. So we're excited to be a part of it. We're going to work very hard to make sure that the decision that was made to select Caesars, that you're going to be proud of that decision. And if you're one of the council members that did not select Caesars and voted against Caesars, we're going to work very hard to make sure you, we turn your heads while we get this project started. So a couple of things. The welcome from the city of Danville has been amazing. I've mentioned to several folks that as we come into new projects like this, usually we're kind of on our own. We're out there doing what we do, just trying to get a project up and running. We don't usually have folks coming to us, city managers, the director of economic development coming to us, the leaders of the universities in this town coming to us. We don't usually have that, and it was quite frankly kind of overwhelming. It's like, oh, my goodness. They're pushing us, which is amazing. So we really appreciate that. I think that's going to be very helpful. To kind of give you an idea of where we're at, we're in the conceptual design phase. So, which means we're trying to figure out on that site where the pieces and parts will go to build this amazing Caesars Virginia project, and so we have a lot of work to do. We're early in the process. We have kind of a milestone, which is middle of November, to get through permitting, so that we're ready to officially break ground on this project in December, so that we can meet the timeline of getting this project up and running by the third quarter of 2023, which sounds like so, so far away, right? 2023, but it's just around the corner. So got a lot of work to do. I think we're making some great progress, and some conversations we had yesterday are going to help us kind of move this thing along, and we really appreciate it, and look forward to being a great partner in this community. That's something that we pride ourselves, is Caesars, is being great partners in the community, so we look forward to that. So thank you, guys.
Well, thank you so much for everything that you all are doing, and thank you for that update, because I'm sure several people have asked, can we be breaking ground? And you just told us possibly in December.
That's the plan.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Thank you, Stephen. We're still in communication from visitors. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, you may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, you may come forward at this time. Under this consent agenda, I open the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pledge? Councilman Campbell?
Received.
I mean, public hearing. Public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Campbell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move for adopting the considered general B, C, and D, if there are no corrections.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Under New Business, consideration of rezoning 109 Barter Street from HRC Highway Retail Commercial to conditional M1 Industrial Manufacturing, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance rezoning 109 Barter Street, parcel ID number 52948, from HRC Highway Retail Commercial to conditional M1 Industrial Manufacturing.
Second by Councilman Whittle. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Under item B, consideration of granting a special use permit to maximum density waiver at 411 Craighead Street, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance granting special use permit application 2021-110 for a maximum density waiver in accordance with Article 3L, Section C13 of the Danville Zoning Ordinance at 411 Craighead Street, parcel ID numbers 21479, 21480, 21481, 21482, and 24373.
Second by Councilman Whittle. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller? Mr. Saunders? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Consideration of granting a special use permit for yard requirement waiver at 1340 Goodyear Boulevard, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, and good evening to you, sir, and welcome.
Sir, I'm Philip Winstead, co-owner of Danville Tree Care. On behalf of my brother and I, I'd like to publicly thank the Danville Fire Department for their actions that saved two adjacent buildings on the night of 9th of December of 2020. Although we lost our main building, they were able to save the foundation, and on that foundation, we're asking approval to rebuild in our father's footsteps.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. We're sitting in public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Please come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve, make a recommendation. We approve an ordinance granting a special use permit application 2021-72 for the yard requirement waiver in accordance with Article 3.0, Section C.25 of the City of Danville Zoning Ordinance at 1340 Goodyear Boulevard, parcel ID number 23011.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please. Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Aye.
Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Under item D, consideration of amending Chapter 41 of the Danville City Code to add the CE Casino Entertainment Zoning District, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item, please come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item, please come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for adopting the ordinance, amending Chapter 41 entitled Zone Ordinance of a Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, amended more specifically by adding new Article 3. V Casino Entertainment District Establishing Zone District Purpose Permit Used. Use permitted by use, special use permit, lot size requirement, buck regulation, parking, actuarial lighting, signs, noise, landscape, and open space, and additional requirements.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Discussion of the motion. Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I got some questions. Who's going to take them?
City manager?
Most likely it'll be Doug.
Okay.
Our planning director, unless it's another question.
I got, I got a couple up front, and then I know Madison might have some, so they may be come back around to me. I don't want to hog up all the time out of the gate, but I'm going through the language in this. I'm going to make sure I'm reading it right. So the maximum building height is 250 feet. If they want to go beyond that, they have to get a special use permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What's the thought process behind? I mean, I don't think if they came with a special use permit, there'd be an issue getting it approved, but I just wonder, what was the thought behind having a cap on it anyway?
Just that if it reached a height like that, there may be some special provisions we would want to coordinate with them as part of the development to offset any potential negative impacts on neighbors or adjacent land uses.
Because I saw the part in here where it talks about the setback, and I'm assuming the smokestacks is what that was kind of primarily in place for, to have it away from that. But that's in addition to the overall height restriction, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'll look. I might come back in a minute if that's okay.
Councilman Whittle.
What's the area that this is going to be for? Caesars, 70 acres, or? I didn't look at that part. I didn't know if it was anything outside and around it.
No, sir. It's not intended to be outside of the Caesar site.
Okay, so you got developers that are going to want to come in around that track and operate, so wouldn't we offer them the same opportunities?
What we are doing is examining the entire corridor and sub area, sub school field neighborhood of the city, and then we will come up with some additional zoning tools to enable appropriate development in that area. We do. We work with.
Either side, up and down the, up and down the streets there, and it would...
We, if you don't mind, I'll add to that. So the, the city before council selected Caesars as the preferred casino gaming operator was in the midst of a school field master plan and had begun that process, and of course, we put a hold on that, a pause on that, and as part of the development agreement with Caesars, Caesars is contributing a certain amount of dollars toward that school field master plan, which is being retooled as we speak. And the school field master plan will study the corridor from North Carolina to the site and from the site to downtown, including the area around the neighborhood and parts of school field. So we think it's important to thoughtfully examine all of those properties and all of those potential uses, and then come forward to city council with some really strong guidance on the kind of development that ought to occur in and around that area. And so that's part of the master planning process, is going to include things like tools like zoning, but also recommendations on how to incentivize and encourage the right kinds of development to occur along the way.
Good, Madison.
I had an idea when we kind of get that in the, in the mix, because I'm sure everybody's phones lighting up around here that wants to do anything in this area, and I mean, if they come in and want to do it, then I guess we'll have to send them through the process here, the same with Caesars, and get a special use permit if it's across the street, the same way they do on their side. I guess we're not offering it outside of their 80 acres, correct?
The, this particular zoning district, this particular zoning district only will apply to the property owned by Caesars.
Y'all see my need, though, right? We got folks that would want to come in and are ready to purchase and ready to get around this site and...
Absolutely. We're not, as Mr. Larkin said, we're not just approaching it from a regulatory toolkit. We're also going to look at other support mechanisms, like market studies, that potential developers could take, whether they're commercial or residential, to help secure financing, to prove the concept ahead of time on that corridor and in the broader school field area.
How tall are the towers or the stacks? 250? Is that why you only got the number 250 out of security?
No, they're, I think, 206 or 207 feet tall.
That's all.
Councilman Campbell, then. Councilman Vogler.
Thank you so much for answering our questions, also for Caesar Entertainment being here tonight. I want to address the issue of noise briefly. Will there be a continuous amount of noise, or only when there's outside events?
My understanding, the perceivable noise at the property line should be, only be detectable while there are outside events. There may be some other lower level ambient noises that are happening with any development of that size that we would get. We have some limits in here, so that if there are disturbances, that if there are beyond a significant amount of noise, we have a way to work with Caesars to mitigate that and make sure they're not a nuisance to the neighbors.
Okay. Is there a process in place in reference to the complaints of the citizens who live around in that area, just in case that they are?
They would be contacting us through, ideally through C Click Fix, but they could contact code enforcement directly, either through the inspections division, the community, or excuse me, the planning and zoning division. We have complaints coming through the city manager's office, but we address them immediately and...
Immediately. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman.
Can I follow up on that question? Of noise?
Sure.
Yeah, what is the decibel limit? And what, go ahead.
I believe it's 70 during the times that we would expect events to occur.
So as I understand it, in other casino areas, Caesar has a way to monitor that and dampen noise or limit their noise. I don't know if they want to comment on that, or you want to comment on that. I'm just trying to reassure the public that when the noise gets to 70, it'll be cut down. In other words, they can limit their amplifiers and so forth to keep it from exceeding the upper limits of normal.
You got, Caesar's is behind you. Dr. Miller is. When we come to, come onto the microphone, and Dr. Miller, restate your question to the Caesar's.
In other areas, other casinos, what does Caesar, what technologies Caesar has to limit gnolly, noise pollution of the surrounding areas? Because we got a lot of complaints, you know, people almost voted against it, or some people did, because they didn't want to let noise in their neighborhood. So what can Caesar do to mitigate that?
So in other jurisdictions where we've had outdoor events, what we've frequently done is we've gone to the neighboring property line where the ordinance is applicable, and we employ continuous monitoring throughout the event. So rather than reply, rather than relying upon continuous measurement... So, rather than reply, rather than relying upon continuous measurement just at the mixing point at the stage or center, center audience, what we do is we'll employ measuring devices at the property line. They're, it's very inexpensive now. You can put an app on your smartphone that'll continuously monitor decibel levels, and we're willing to obviously staff that or record that or whatever we need to do from a procedural standpoint to, to make sure we comply.
So, if you turn down the amplifiers, et cetera, to be compliant, okay. Just wanted to...
Anything else, Dr. Miller?
Reassure people. Go ahead.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Councilman Vogler, back to you.
Yeah, I just, I don't have anything for you. You guys are good with me. Doug, first of all, let me just say, I appreciate the work that was put into this, and I, I like the vast majority of it. I think there is a lot of flexibility in here, and I'm glad that you guys worked through that, and yeah, I hope that's a direction we can continue to go in for all of the city. I just had a quick question, and then after that, I'm gonna make a suggestion. For the section on lighting and sign, excuse me, signage, the lighting was good. Thank you for that, too. I think that was what we talked about in the last one. Signage, the maximum freestanding sign height is 40 feet for onsite. So, and I don't know if they have any plan for it, or I'm just using this as a hypothetical to help me wrap my mind around it. The water tower that's on the back of that property, if they wanted to put a Caesar's sign on that, that obviously is higher than 40 feet. They would not be allowed to do that under this, or is that a special, is it existing? I'm just trying to make sure I understand the language in this.
That would be a building facade sign.
Okay.
Not a separate freestanding sign.
Because it's an exist, okay.
Because it's a building.
All right, well, that answers that, and so anything then, all right, that falls on that. If I could take everybody back up to Section E, if you read E2, and I alluded to earlier, it says buildings 200 feet or taller must be set back from any non-building structures that are 200 feet or taller by at least 100 feet. Call that the smoke stack rule. Buildings under 200 feet tall must be set back from any non-building structures that are 200 feet or taller by at least 50 feet. So, that's in place. That makes sense. I get that. I would like for us to strike the line above that, E1, the maximum building height of 250 feet. I personally don't see the need to have that language in there. I think any concerns we had about it being close to buildings or anything of that, or structure of that nature is covered in E2. So, I don't want to restrict how tall they can build the building. So, I don't know if that needs to be, Clark, how, with the process for me to officially do that.
The motion's been made.
Larry didn't, Larry read it.
The motion's been made.
Yeah, Larry made the motion.
The motion's been made, he's, he's...
Like a substitute motion's what I'm asking.
You would do a, an amendment by striking that line. So, so what, we haven't voted on it yet, and so what you would do is you would move to amend the motion by striking that line. That would require a second, then we'll vote on the amendment, and then the motion as amended.
I would like to do that now.
Let's, let's, let's get, let's, let me come back to you. We guys other, let's get out of discussion, and then we'll come back to it, because I got other names.
Okay.
Is that okay? Councilman Saunders.
I think it was, Mayor. The, the number 70 in terms of, you know, decimal, we know we have rules to govern our city. We had the festival in the park for a number of years. I don't know what that number decimal is for that, so I don't see that as being a huge problem at this point unless I'm missing something. And with regards to the rules to govern Caesar's ability to do some things differently, to have a certain height or whatever, I, I think that within our rules, we have the ability to make any adjustment that we, that we need to make. So, I have not heard anything presently that concerns me about what Caesar's wants to do, and if they do, they can come back to us, and we do have provision that we can look at to see if we can make modifications. Is that correct, Mr. Counselor, Mr. Attorney?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so, I, I guess given that, and in terms of, of size, and I don't know if Caesar have any idea what size of sign they want to have, or they want to erect. You know, the sign we see at Christmas time, it used to be by the bridge, and now it's over by a sacred ark. I don't know the dimension, but everybody can see that sign, and everybody loved that sign. So, I'm not really hearing any real concerns presently that we cannot fix down the road if we need to, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Miller, back to you. Did your question get answered?
Got, got answered, yes, sir.
Great. Anyone else? Well, there's a motion on the floor. Back to you, Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I'm cool with the signage and everything else in it. I'm talking about strictly about the building height, and, and so if they wanted to build the building as they're going through this process, 251 feet, in order to, if we pass it as it's written right now, they have to come back to City Council to get a, a special use permit to go a foot taller. I just, I, I just don't see the benefit of making them go through the extra step of doing that, when again, I think anything that there may have been of concern is covered in the line right below that. So again, I, I just think it's, it's unnecessary to have the additional restriction and then making them go through another step to come back here. That's just me.
Councilman Saunders, and then Councilman Whittle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vogler, I think has, has a very good point in the sense of trying to accommodate this new, this new industry. We certainly appreciate that. I'm looking a little bit further down the road in the sense that if we strike this and someone else come in and want to have something very, very high, we don't have any ability to, I guess, to address that. So, I guess I'm saying that on an as-needed basis, I would like to accommodate Caesar's with any promotion they may have, but to, I want you to remember, Danville is growing. It's going to grow even more. More people are already looking at Danville, okay? So, I think we need to have certain rules to maintain order with the provision of adjusting those rules as we need to. So, I hear Mr. Vogler, and I have no objection to what he's trying to do. I just would prefer that people come to us on an as-needed basis, as opposed to someone coming in knowing there are no heights requirement, and next thing, we know we have a problem.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
This is specifically for this particular site, though. This wouldn't change anything beyond this district, correct?
Correct.
Correct me if I'm wrong, to Councilman Saunders' point, if Joe Blow wants to come in and take a building up, if we scratched this as high as he want to, he, he could do that, couldn't he? Yes or no? No, okay. Councilman Whittle.
So, my question, did we ask Caesar's what the height they wanted by any chance?
Yes.
Okay, was that fit under their height restrictions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, to Councilman Whittle's point, this, what we have tonight was given to us by Caesar's.
We coordinated the drafting of the ordinance with Caesar's.
Fantastic. Thank you. With, Councilman Buckner.
By, by my little simple calculations here, I think 250 foot, you can get 23 stories and roughly 23 stories in that, and I don't think we've discussed anything that was 23 stories tall. It's not gonna affect anything else in the city. I'm okay with it as it's written.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you so much. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
This is not the amendment?
No, this is the original motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye. Under Item E, consideration of amending Chapter 41 of Danville City Code to amend Article 2P accessory uses and structures, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending Chapter 41 entitled Zoning Ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended, more specifically to amend Article 2. P accessory uses and structures to allow side yard mechanical units in residential zoning districts with appropriate screening and separation distance from neighboring dwellings, windows, and doors.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Under Item F, consideration of approving a lease agreement with Danville Baseball LLC, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Dr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution authorizing and approving a lease agreement with Danville Baseball LLC.
Second by Councilman Vogler. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Under Item G, consideration of the formation of a 501(c)(3) corporation by Danville Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Counsel, what's your pledge? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve a resolution approving the creation of a 501(c)(3) corporation by the Danville Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the purpose of providing rental and homeownership housing opportunities and youth services.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Whittle.
Aye.
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 Mayor Jones.
Alonzo Jones, do hear by state that I have a conflict of interest regarding the consideration of the creation of a 501(c)(3) corporation by the Danville Redevelopment and Housing, listed on agenda as new business agenda item G, therefore pursuant to the state and local government conflict of interest, Virginia Code 2.23112, I must abstain from voting on this agenda item.
Mayor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Under Item H, consideration of approval of the transfer of casino funds for various projects. Counsel, what's your, Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adopting a resolution approving the transfer of Caesar's funds to various projects of the City of Danville for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
22.
Second. Councilman Whittle. Discussion of the motion. Councilman Whittle.
So, we already had the discussion about this, how these funds were gonna be set up in, in the last meeting we were in.
The, uh, these amounts were established based on a series of conversations to include the council retreat that occurred, I believe, in February, and the recommendation by our financial advisors to leverage the one-time casino funds in a way, along with the budget, in order to accomplish some of the projects that have been identified as priorities by City Council. The priority areas, as I recall them, education was number one, economic development was number two, public safety was number three, and so these projects are all in line with projects identified previously and are parts of the budget as recommended by, by the, the city staff. And so there's been discussion on each of these items when councils met as a whole.
So, this on the 20 million we got, or the 15 million that we got, and, and forward, that everything's, I didn't think, I didn't think council liked it.
The city council adopted...
I thought that we had a, we had a little struggle with all that.
So, this is the resolution that is, is required by City Council based on the vote that was made shortly after receiving the $15 million. City Council adopted a res, I don't know, I think it was an ordinance or a resolution saying that the appropriation of any of those funds had to be done by separate resolution. So, as part of the overall comprehensive recommended budget process, in order to accomplish the goals and priorities of the city for the next fiscal year, staff recommended using a portion of the one-time casino funds to begin those projects, and so that requires this resolution in conjunction with the entire budget. So, it's kind of a...
One-time fund, I mean, on the, on the 20 million, that's fine. We, we understand what's happening there, but this is on down the road when, when the real jack starts rolling in.
Yes, the, when our financial advisors did a presentation at the retreat, they talked about how we could leverage our one-time funds to begin projects now, but also talked about how our, once the minimum city counts, minimum casino gaming revenue comes in per year, once they're up and running, which is about $5 million per year is what's in our, our development agreement, we could plan for projects over the long term and be able to fund those projects very safely, within our means, without having to worry about overextending ourselves. Obviously, we think that the 5 million is the bare minimum. We, we think that it's gonna be much higher than that, but our financial advisors felt like it was a good program, looking at the long term. It would set us up to have good credit ratings when we go to the credit rating agencies every year to borrow funds. We're hoping that because we're taking a conservative approach and trying to be careful about how we spend our money and investing it in areas that we believe will create sustainable growth, that our credit ratings will go up, because that has been the one area where, when you look at our credit ratings, where we've had some deficiencies, is that the economy of Danville has been, has struggled for some time. But this, what we're trying to do here is invest money in a way that will create a better economy for our community and will lead to checking that box when they're checking our, when they're looking at our financial health and our financial stability and our sustainability, so that we can then improve in our credit rating. So, we're, we're trying to be careful about it, taking the advice of our financial advisors to do so.
If I had 20 million in this, in this account right here, and 20 million in this account, then, oh, excuse me, if I just had 20 million in either one of those accounts, those count on my balance sheet when I'm going to get my credit rating, whether it's in this various fund or these other various projects, and it's, it's just, it's just a little easier for this old guy here to know where the money's going. I can look at it, and then this, this council's decision to decide to take this money out and where we want to spend it, that's, that's my point.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, council will be privy to where the money's being spent.
It's listed in the resolution.
Yeah, I'm not saying...
Exactly. That's a done deal. Exactly. So, okay, Madison, back to you, then I come back.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying if anybody's doing anything wrong or right, I'm just saying it's easier for me to see it, and it's not in all these different projects, and if it is, we're gonna go over and put it in it anyway. So, what's the difference between the general fund and these various, various projects?
Those are all general fund activities. Those projects are all usually paid for with general fund dollars, and then, you know...
Yes, but it's a one-time, are we talking about the, the one-time money, which we understand where that is? That's not a problem. When that other money rolls in, and there's some older council than me sitting here in three or four years, are they gonna see the money and know where it is? But they get older, you know?
Absolutely.
They can't see very well. They can't hear very well, but we want to know where the money is.
Absolutely. There's, there'll be full transparency. The budget, I imagine when we start, the staff starts working on recommending budgets in the future, when we can anticipate a significant portion of casino gaming revenue, that we will have a recommendation on how much revenue to anticipate receiving, and then how we would plan to spend those funds. then how we would plan to spend those funds. What we want to do is try to focus most of that funding on one-time type expenses or capital expenses or investments in our future, so that that can produce long-term sustainable revenue for us in the future, because we don't know what the future is, frankly, for casino gaming in Danville. It, it's, uh, and we don't know the future necessarily of how the revenue will come in. A lot of things can change, as most people on city council know, and many people in the public know, the city operates only under the authority of the state, and the state has the ability to change the rules whenever they feel like it. So, uh, we, we, you know, we're gonna be very careful as members of staff to not recommend using funds from casino gaming on things that will be ongoing expenses necessarily, uh, for, for the most part, because we don't want to worry about how we're gonna pay for those things should the revenue stream not be there. Uh, so I think taking it a conservative approach is a smart way to do it, and, uh, but absolutely, uh, council will be adopting every budget, uh, that we had, and when we only spend money that's approved by city council, and we'll be presenting those recommendations in full transparency.
Counselor Vogler.
Yeah, so, and hang with me for a second, Madison, so, um, what you were talking about in a previous meeting where we discussed and we made some changes and, and things, and what that was, was that, uh, it, it, if we hadn't made the change, Ken could, if he wanted to, which he wouldn't have, but he could have gone rogue and just, you know, signed off on projects without them having to come to council. They have to come to council, and that's actually what we're voting on tonight. Um, the, the list of projects here, and, and it's not the, the totality of the 15 million remaining, it's, it's a little over half of a little over 8 million, and that includes, some of that is with the police headquarters, that's, that's been discussed already. I did have a couple of questions, though, looking at, at the list on here, just want to get some, some, maybe some background real quick, folks may ask about these things when they look at the, um, when they look at the agenda, they may want to know, so I think it's good if we can get them that information here tonight. There is, uh, 1.1 million, uh, under the comprehensive blight for neighborhood revitalization. Can you get a quick synopsis of, of that real quick?
Sure. A majority of tho- those, uh, dollars will be spent in working, uh, with the Danville Neighborhood Development Corporation to improve neighborhoods that are at risk of transitioning from owner-occupied to renter-occupied, from a, you know, some, with experiencing a, a small amount of blight to maybe potentially experiencing a large amount of blight. One of the recommendations that we've received multiple times from housing experts is that if you can work on neighborhoods that are in that transition period and direct them more toward homeownership and reinvestment and redevelopment, that you actually have a much larger benefit than if you, uh, are waiting until they become fully blighted and you're deciding whether or not to demolish or to spend a lot of money to bring it up to a certain standard. So this is, uh, we're, we're working with them very closely to be able to, uh, do, do that kind of work, that's a big majority of what's proposed. Uh, this, the neighborhood we're focusing in on is around the Danville Community College Campus, Kemper Road. Um, there are neighborhoods in and around that area that are, are good, solid, middle-class family neighborhoods, but they have some edges of it around there that are experiencing some blighted issues that we want to address and, and work on to improve those neighborhoods. So one of the things that a lot of folks, that I've heard council members mention, and then people in the community have mentioned, is how are we investing outside of the River District? This is an example of what we are wanting to do to invest in a neighborhood, um, to help them, uh, you know, the people in that neighborhood have a better quality of life.
Thank you. Um, so school renovations is, is $2 million now. I know folks are gonna hear a whole lot about school renovations in the months ahead, so explain to me how this is separate and different from what that's gonna be.
So the, the $2 million for school renovations, actually, the, the, in this particular case, because this is a part of the overall recommended budget, uh, there, I'm getting into a little bit of some technicalities here, but the, the ability for us to finance certain projects are limited, uh, so there are, uh, in order, it, this, using the, the casino funds to pay for school renovations, uh, rather than through the traditional budget process, enables us to, uh, be more flexible with the other dollars in the budget that are going towards other projects. Uh, so I, I, I guess the best way to describe it is, is that this is one piece of a comprehensive recommendation for our entire budget, and when the staff was looking at how do we fund all the different pieces within next year's budget program, the best way to plug that hole was to use this, these funds to pay for that.
And that also goes towards the, what we changed in regards to our priorities, our three-year priorities. Uh, we actually moved education to the top of that priority.
Well, thank you, and, and again, I'm only going through these, and, and I know the answer to a lot of them, but I know that these are questions that folks are gonna want to have, and we get asked, every one of us get asked all the time about where the casino money is, is going and all that, so I think it's important to folks to, to hear these projects. Uh, the GW track renovations, so when somebody sees that, they're gonna go, didn't y'all talk about that a handful of years ago? This gets it done, right? And, and so essentially, from what I've been told, this time next year, there will be a usable track and field facility for our high school students, and this makes that happen?
Goal is for the next track season for them to have a track facility.
Well, that, that is long overdue and a big deal, and I, I want folks to know that, that, that city council has, has made that a priority and wants to see that happen and getting that done. Last thing, and I know I've been talking, the local match, the TIC grant, i- is that for an unannounced project, and if it is, you don't...
It is, uh, I don't believe it is for an unannounced project, actually. It is matching a grant that has been already granted by the Tobacco Commission in order to further ready an industrial site, so that, uh, when prospects come to our community, uh, they can, uh, quickly ramp up, uh, their building and get to working on whatever their building. And, uh, it was mentioned, actually, I believe, at the Aero Farms event a couple weeks ago, how important it was, uh, for Aero Farms' decision to locate in our community that we had a graded pad. And so this is, uh, helping to match Tobacco Commission grant funds, also Pennsylvania County funds, in order to create a graded pad that would attract an industry to our community and help them with the ramp-up period, uh, in, in order to get their business going and hire people, uh, produce tax base for our community, and, uh, and start making, uh, hopefully, a profit.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Miller.
Yes, uh, back on the GW track, now, that 1.3 million, is that, that's coming from the Caesar's funds? So the 1.3 million we'd previously put in escrow, will that be addition, so it'll be a total of 2.6 million?
It's a 2.4 million dollar estimated project. Some of the funds for the track were spent on studies related to the track, uh, so we didn't have the entire 1.3 million left, but it's, this, in addition to the money that was set aside, will construct the track.
Thank you.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes, briefly, Ken, uh, I thank you for your wise decision of what you're doing in the community. I have a brief question. We have a mandate of $20 million that we have to keep in, in the general fund all the time. Now, we usually, I think we round, we usually stay around 30, 31, 32, if I'm not mistaken. Is it your intent to increase the funds, reserve funds, for a stronger base, or to take what you have and just use that for a one-time fix? Or what's your, what's your ideal of your proportionment in reference to the general fund?
It is the recommendation of our financial advisors, the, the folks that go with us when we get credit rating, uh, ratings, that we increase the amount, the percentage of our general fund balance, and we will, at some point in the near future, when those revenues start coming in, recommend that city council adopt a change to its financial policies that would increase the minimum for our fund balance, which we hope would be, would lead to stronger financial stability, uh, a better, uh, you know, savings plan, I guess, or a, a better emergency plan for us for any instance that came up, and it would improve our, our credit rates.
Do you have a percentage in mind of the increase?
Uh, I'm not sure that we've, I, I think there had been a percentage discussed, and I believe it might have been, um, I'm not sure if Michael's in here, but, um, 30% or 40% of the general fund revenues, but we, we want to take a look at that carefully, because frankly, the, the new revenues coming to the city will increase the amount of annual revenue, so the percentage will be, will result in a much higher dollar amount, because the general fund revenues, it's based on general fund revenues, and we expect those revenues to go up quite a bit with casino gaming revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Counselor Saunders.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, those who are watching the meeting tonight will see that the shovel has not gone into the ground, but Caesar's is spending money left and right, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Counselor Buckner.
Yeah, I want to touch base back on what, uh, Dr. Miller said, uh, talking about the, the track at GW. With the success that Galileo has seen, won't they be able to share that track?
I would anticipate that that would happen, uh, but I'm not the superintendent, I'm not the principal, but they, my understanding, based on conversations I've had with the school system, is that when there are opportunities for them to share facilities between high schools, that they do that, uh, that they take students from GW and bring them to Galileo to participate in IB programs, and then they take Galileo students to GW to do precision machining, for example, or other things. So I believe that probably will be the case, but we do have our superintendent here who may be able to answer that question better than I could. Probably should be able to answer.
She said you...
She gave the thumbs up, so...
She gave the thumbs up.
I did all right, then.
Counselor Buckner. Thank you very much, that's all. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Buckner.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Counsel, we've had our two-on-two and one-on-one meetings with the superintendent. It has went through the school board, it's went through, um, to the public, and I'll allow you to ask your questions during public hearing. We have our school board superintendent here, Dr. Harrison is here, and we have two school board members here, our vice chair, and Mr. Tyrell. So under Item I, consideration of approving the fiscal year 2022 Danville School Board Budget, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on any, this agenda item may come forward this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. I close the public hearing. Counselor Saunders.
I think, Mr. Mayor, uh, to get some motions and discussions, um, going on this side of the roll, I move to adopt a resolution approving the budget. School board of the city of Danville for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
Second by Counselor Buckner, first reading, discussion of the motion. Counselor Saunders.
Uh, yes, sir, I do have one question, Mr. Manager. Am I correct? When you look at all the money for the schools, the capital, generals, it's around 25 million?
Yes, with the debt service and the capital, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Under Item J, J, a consideration of approving the budget for the city of Danville, the capital and special projects plan and budget appropriation ordinance, I open the public hearing, counsel. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time, including counsel. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counselor Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the budget to the various funds of the city of Danville for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, first reading.
Second by Counselor Buckner, discussion of the motion, first reading. Item three, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2022 capital and special projects plan for the city of Danville, Virginia. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counselor Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution, uh, for the fiscal year 2022 capital and special projects plan for the city of Danville, Virginia.
Second by Counselor Mayo, first reading, discussion of the motion. Under Item four, budget appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2022, counsel, what's your pleasure? Counselor Buckner.
Like to make a motion that we approve the budget appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2022, first reading.
Second by Counselor Mayo, discussion of the motion, first reading. Under Item K, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance for the recreation enrichment program in the amount of $186,102, counsel, what's your pleasure? Counselor Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance missing the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for funds in the amount of $52,220 for a recreation enhancement program for the local in-kind share of $130,882, for a total appropriation of $186,102, and appropriating the same, first reading.
There's second. Second by Counselor Mayo, again, first reading. Under Item L, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance for pre-disaster mitigation grant funds in the amount of $150,000, Counselor Hood.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance for a project to be undertaken within the city of Danville and to be financed, anticipating revenues from Federal Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $150,000.
Second by Counselor Buckner, first reading. Under communication, City Manager.
I have nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We question City Manager. Sure.
Yeah. Uh, I, I think we need to clear up the parking thing. Uh, it, it came out in the paper the other day about the one-hour parking on Main Street, but a lot of people think it's the whole River District area that'll be cut to one hour, so we need to clarify that up. I've had a lot of people ask me about that, and I know there's, some people are in favor of the one hour, some are not, but a lot of people who are on our Main Street think it applies to them.
Well, uh, I'll be happy to clear that up now. Well, the, it, it, the change only impacts Main Street. There are no changes outside of Main Street to the timed parking that is being proposed.
Everything else but Lynn Street will be two-hour parking.
There is a variety of parking. There's some places where there's no limit to parking. The further you get away from really the central core of the River District, if you get to the outer areas, you start to see where there's no limit on parking. Uh, that, the, the strategy there is that if you're willing to walk a little further, then you can actually park a little longer.
And then the other thing is, we've had requests from people on Lynn Street, particularly the new business that opened today, uh, they're holding classes in pottery, and it's gonna be hard for them to do a one-hour, you know, class. Uh, can we look at that? That's the only place outside of Main Street that's gonna, it's still gonna be, uh, one hour, and it's just that one section of Lynn Street.
Uh, we can certainly take a look at that. I'm not a, it's, I'm not familiar enough with that, but if you're telling me it's one hour now, then I don't have any reason not to believe you.
I'm just going by the parking thing now, yeah. But they've requested...
We can check.
Check into that.
We're, we're not, if it's, I don't know what's currently posted, but we're not changing anything that's currently posted there. If it's currently posted as two hours, it's gonna stay two hours, but...
Currently posted is one hour.
Is it?
Yeah, Lynn Street is. It's, it's, I don't know why it's an outlier, but it seems to be.
Okay, can you get that information back?
I could find out, uh, Lynn Street to see, you know, what that is, but I, I would characterize that, just off the top of my head, as a little further away from the central core where, where two-hour might be more appropriate.
Deputy City Manager. Thank you. City Attorney.
Uh, yes, sir. I, I was watching the NFL Draft, because I'm, I'm a geek like that, and I was very surprised and pleasantly surprised to see that one of the foster parents who was here tonight, Felicia Edmonds, was featured along with her sons on a National Kay Jewelers ad.
Awesome.
Uh, so I thought that was, I thought that was, I thought that was pretty cool, that somebody in our community was part of a national, it wasn't a local ad, it was one of the national ads that went out across both the NFL Network and ESPN.
Mind you, what Counselor Saunders always say, Danville is on their map everywhere.
Everywhere.
Here, thank you, sir. And so you, now we know Counselor Saunders is a prophet. City clerk.
That's P-R-O-F-I-T. I got his license papers.
City clerk.
No, thanks, sir.
Uh, roll call, please.
Buckner.
Yeah, um, just wanted to give my hats off to everybody. Um, Norma Brower and her team always do a fantastic job with the Make Danville Shine kickoff event. Uh, it was a great success, and, um, the late crowd came in, I think, after, uh, Counselor Hood and Mr. Mayo and myself left at a reasonable time. I believe you guys showed up at the last minute, but that's okay, as long as you showed up and showed out. That's all that matters, right?
I was putting a face maker, please.
So let me just read you a little bit from this, uh, let me just read you a little bit from the, uh, city's website about, uh, Make Danville Shine. It's encouraging, and we're all encouraging everyone in our city to get involved. The city would like to empower your community to come together and to make a meaningful impact on your area by providing resources that will allow you to clean up, paint up, and fix up your neighborhood. Uh, we want you to join us in this, to, to take some pride in your home, take some pride in your neighborhood, take some pride in our city, as we all do. Um, there's some, uh, just, here's a few little tips that they give on the website, and it's a great, um, great resource. great, great resource. If you ever have any questions, what you can set out on the curb, when you can set it out on the curb, it's just a wealth of information. And if you have any questions concerning that, you can email makedanvilleshine@danvilleva.gov. And you can take pictures of your projects, they're encouraging you to do so, and hashtag it on Facebook or Instagram or Twitter or whatever you do, Make Danville Shine. But here's a few little things they recommend. Clean out the gutters of your home, repaint the shutters, your front door or fence, clear your yard of weeds, vines, or overgrowth, landscape your yard using flowers, mulch, and other materials, and set debris, trash, and appliances and furniture at the curbside, and the city crews will pick it up. Councilman Whittle, you understand how valuable that is to a homeowner and to an investor and to a developer.
Very engaged in that program.
The, the amount of fees that you save by allowing the city to come pick up your unwanted things from your rental properties or your home, the home that you live in. Take an hour or so a day, take a day, take a weekend, and show love and make Danville shine. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Nothing.
Mr. Hood?
Yeah, I wanted to commend the Danville City Police Department. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of giving a tour of the old West End to the new officers. Officer Taquon Graves is here tonight, and we had a great time just going through and interacting throughout the community. So it was just a great day to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just hats off to the Make Danville Shine also. I enjoyed that, being out with the council members, seeing all the citizens and what we got going on. Had a great time touring through the community market and looking forward to all that fresh produce and so forth that's going to be coming through there. For all who have come out too, looking at Tommy over there from NAACP and Danville Public Schools, and it looks good to see all the school officials and everyone else that's in the audience. It just was a good evening, good day for that. And I'm looking forward to now that the summer is getting ready, head in here, see what else is going on. We also, going out to the break, groundbreaking of Aero Farms was just a great thing to see, seeing companies come in to our city, seeing how, as Mr. Saunders said, seeing how our city is growing. And having the engagement yesterday with Caesar's, guys enjoyed every minute that we spend talking about what's about to happen. Just going to bed is like a child in a candy store. You just went in there, bought everything, and now you're sleeping on it. So we're looking for the best to come in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, I'm a little late getting there, but I got there Saturday. I was putting in a pacemaker. But anyway, I got there, and it's just a great event. They got all strawberries, and I got some tomatoes. They will pick up things from your curbside. So if you've got some white elephants you want picked up, they'll pick those up this month. So all your trash and so forth. The only downside of this year is that COVID prevented me from serving former Mayor Sherman Saunders his annual, once-a-year turkey dog. But they wouldn't let us cook them this year. They wrapped them up and gave them out. Today, the pottery works opened, and I commented, you know, why we needed a pottery here in Danville. Well, if you go down to Seegrove, they have dozens of pottery shops. They have pottery tours and pottery trails. And in Greenville, sort of our sister city for, in Greenville, South Carolina, for renovating their downtown, we followed after their lead to renovate our downtown. There's at least a dozen pottery shops. So we don't, we probably will never get a dozen pottery shops here, but this pottery shop can become part of our art trail. And economic development, I know, is working. The city has taken over the economic development, and they, and all of us would like to see an art trail in Danville. And I'm sure the pottery shop would be on one of the stops. So it was a big event, a good event. Utilities, I'll just bring you a couple of things, utilities. If you looked at the paper today, Appalachian Power is raising their, wants to raise their utility rates, twenty, only average $22 a month. They were turned down by the State Corporation Committee. They're taking it to the Supreme Court. Well, if you remember, last month, we told you that Danville Utilities rates would be going down. So other, other utilities are raising their rates. And believe me, you, I can tell you from personal experience, Appalachian Power rates were no bargain before they're going up again. So I think we're certainly holding our own. The battery storage project is getting a little delayed because ordering the parts, COVID and everything has slowed it down. We still plan to get that online by May of 2022. The storage for peak power production in our warehouses. So it's a little, going to be a little delayed from what we originally told you, but it's going to get there fairly early in 2022. And the Aero Farms thing was great. Tonight at supper, I had the Watercrest on my salad that they produced. They gave samples out last week. They can produce leafy greens four to 14 days. Think that, within less than two weeks, they can have leafy greens packaged and ready to go out. It's amazing technology. They grow 550 varieties, employ 100 people. And it, they have very few pesticides, no pesticides, and less water than is normally used, because they put in their, they can calculate the amount of water the plant needs and give it exactly that amount of water. So this is certainly a huge hit win for Danville, because this is their, this is a company that's around the world, but this is going to be their largest plant in the United States, particularly for leafy green vegetables. 500, 550 varieties, no pesticides. Thank you.
Dr. Miller, I want you to know that you have really made me hungry tonight. You served beef hot dogs, leafy greens. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Turkey hot dog.
Mr. Saunders?
I think, Mr. Mayor. And I say to Mr. Buckner, the mayor, the vice mayor, also Mr. Campbell, Mr. Mayo, Mr. Vogler, myself, his mothers, we really enjoyed the, you know, Make Danville Shine event.
Yes.
So I say to Mr. Buckner, don't hate us. Congratulate us.
Glad y'all finally woke up and joined in.
Okay. And I want to say a special hello to Stephen Gold, who's also a former school board member, a counselor, councilor, lawyer, law firm in our city, doing wonderful things. Yes, sir. Wonderful thing. Thank you very much. And if Richmond or Washington call you back, tell them you need council permission to go, and the answer is no. Okay. Also, I want to say a special thank you to Pat. Piedmont Access to Health Services do an excellent job. They're serving five jurisdictions, okay? They're helping people in many, many ways. If you ride by the office on the corner of Main and, and I believe, corner of Main Street and...
Ridge.
Ridge Street, you will see traffic there all the time. And they're also in Chatham, Martinville, all the places as well. And they are still giving the shots to those who need them. So Pat, we say thank you very much. Thank Mr. Mayo's on that board, also to Mr. Marshall Mendingall, Tori Lester, the staff. You do a great job over there, and we really do appreciate that. And again, I say to you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
Yes, as Councilman Saunders said, the rest of us, we did go to Make Danville Shine. We were just waiting for Buckner to leave.
There you go.
It really is an exciting time, you know, the Aero Farms groundbreaking we had the other day, and then we've got a really exciting announcement coming up on Monday. And then this morning, Dr. Miller and Councilman Buckner and myself were at the ribbon cutting for M. Potter's, as Dr. Miller said. If you haven't had a chance to see it when it was on live earlier, you can go check it out on River City TV earlier. You can, you can hear a great story from Dr. Miller talking about the wonderful love scenes from the movie Ghost. It's, it's really something. I encourage everybody to go watch, so...
Pottery love scenes.
Yeah, pottery love scenes, yes. And, and how it ranked on the scale of movie love scenes, it was, it was all I could hope for this morning. And lastly, I just want to say to everyone, may the fourth be with you. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Can y'all hear me? Okay, good. First, I'd like to thank Jason Gray and Mr. Haley. They took me on a tour, and they took me on a great tour of the Pinnacles when I first got on council, and that, I know we sold it, but that's the most amazing project. When I was standing up there, they had all the city councilman's plaque on that, on the top of that dam. And when I stood up there, I realized that those guys had made a move, that it was a $6 million move to build a power plant for Danville. Had to have some stones to pull all that together, and I just, I think that this council will continue to work in that magnitude. I feel like with the casino, I think that it was just a really big learning moment for me when you would see the councilmen before us and mayors and public officials. But anyway, they took me to the other transformers all around the city, and I suggest anybody go or, and see what, how massive our electric department is. It's, they do, they do a great job down there. I'm not telling you power rates are going down, and I'm not telling you they're going up either. But it was something that you need to go and understand a little bit if you want to. Of course, you can still bitch about your power bill. And so again, with Caesar's, I thank them for being here, and this council is driving it home to them. They understand what we're doing. And that Councilman Mayo was in the meeting with me, and he's looking out, I can tell you that, because the gentleman showed us these, these seats that he, they could, they could move in and out quickly to get an event done. Barry leaned in, he says, those are the VIP seats. I was like, now we got the right conversation going. And they weren't for us at that point, but at least with Caesar's, they're on, they're on point. And what else do we have? The Make Danville Shine. Thank the City Manager now, because I said in the last meeting, I said, anything you want to put on the curb. And he looked at me, he said, yes. So it's been easy for me, and I'm sure the rest of this council, just to say, anything. We're not making you do this. You don't have to do these things. We want to get everything out of your yards. Those old junky tires that you got stuffed under your back porch and right down on the edge of your bushes, so you don't want your people to see them, drag them out, put them on the road. That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Livingston and Mr. Quick, when you spoke earlier, you talked about the hospitality in our community, and there's so much more to come. I was so thankful for Councilman Saunders actually giving accolades to Stephen. I looked at Stephen, he didn't want them. He didn't want them at all. He was like, no, I'm not in it for this. But the same accolades that we, you received in the city of Danville while you were visiting, we just wanted you to see how we treat our own. And I thank Councilman Saunders for recognizing Stephen, because he's been hitting the ground from day one with Caesar's. And he absolutely donated me as a co-chair. I haven't talked to him about that yet. And then at the end of it, when things started getting rough, he said, Mayor, we're going to let you sit back a little bit. But Stephen, we appreciate what you're doing. Last thing I have is, just want everyone, you've heard everything that council, I think council, but this Sunday is Mother's Day. And just want you all to, all the mothers who are watching and listening to us, and all of the children of those wonderful mothers, just want you to know that we sincerely appreciate you. I don't think we're going to wait till Sunday to celebrate you. And if you, like I, your mother's no longer with us, we can help others like Madison and all of the others. Madison's mother's always watching, always watching. Larry's mother's always watching. And so we just, Lee's mother's out there pounding the payway. So we just want to say to all of the mothers that we sincerely pray that you have the most wonderful and enjoyable. We always say Happy Mother's Day, and I close with this. We want to say and have an enjoyable Mother's Day. You can always be happy, but enjoy it. Put the happiness and enjoy together. And to those of you watching, please celebrate your mother. Take it from me, celebrate your mother on that note we adjourned. We'll take a 10-minute recess.